Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the June 15th, 2022 board meeting and remind everyone to please mute your audio when not speaking, as well as state your name prior to making a comment or motion and second for an action item. I will begin this evening by asking each commissioner to please respond with a here when I call out their name. Commissioner Bagnell?
I am here.
Good evening. Commissioner Doan?
I'm here.
Good evening, Commissioner Doan and Commissioner Duggan.
Here or go.
Evening. Good evening to you too, Commissioner Duggan. We'll begin this evening by reports from the chief executive officer and management staff. And sitting in this evening is our good friend, Paul Matthews. Paul, take it away, sir.
Thank you, President Sanders and commissioners. As I mentioned a bit ago, Tom is taking care of his family matter tonight, so I'll be pitch hitting for Tom. So just to get right to the report here. First, a report on Portland crypto spreadium. So for this month, month of May that we're reporting on, Portland had reported one crypto spreadium OSIS detection in the water system affected from Bull Run Headworks. And prior to this detection, crypto spreading was last detected from Bull Run watershed intake back in March of March 16th of 2022. And if you want more results, you can continue to go to Portland's website where they have the information. A bit of a challenging bit of information. And we wanted to present this information to you here tonight, just as a heads up that the current weather has really affected our water sales. And so what you see here are net demands. The solid blue line that you see is our daily average by month. And the dotted line is our historical average over a five year period. The same data, but averaged over a five year period. Normally by now, we would be experiencing higher water sales. And in fact, so far, as you can see, we haven't broken 20 MGD. We haven't broken 25 MGD in the system. What this means is we'll see, as we gather numbers, we're closing out May still, but we're probably going to see a negative variance and unfavorable variance in water sales revenue for May of a couple hundred thousand. But really what happens here is that the water that is not being sold because of our current weather environment, that sort of takes up the block one water and it gets us into block two in July and August. So we are going to have a delayed effect from the impact of this weather. And just want you to be aware of that. And we'll present more information on this as the weather further materializes. So that is a bit of information. A bit of good news, however, I want to share is that I think we mentioned that we were taking our first draw on our WIFI loan on Monday. The EPA delivered to us $103.4 million that we put to work immediately. And Tuesday it went into some treasury securities. The net amount for the benefit of our customers is about $4.9 million. So by making this investment, we're going to be able to save our customers $4.9 million, which will help make up for this foul weather that we're that we're seeing. So we're happy to report that tonight. The other thing we want to talk about is the Special Districts Association. Special Districts Insurance Services has the best practice program that the district has followed for many years. It's designed to assist special districts with implementing best practices to mitigate risks in areas of high exposure. So by participating, the district can receive 10% credit on our property casualty insurance fees for the 2023 policy year. The district participates in this program annually and consistently receives the 10% credits. We appreciate all the help in maintaining that credit. This year, the board can help the district receive the full credit. There are two categories, each worth 2% that will require board participation. First, all board members, all members of the board have to complete a course regarding board member duties and responsibilities. That training course will be assigned through the district's online training program. I think you've all had that before. The board members will receive an email with details on how to access the sign training. So once you get that email, go through the training and it will automatically record your attendance and progress. The second opportunity would be to have at least two board members that would enroll in the SDO Board Leadership Academy. And this obviously provides training for board members to help mitigate these risks. The interesting thing is board members not actually need to complete any specific training in the academy for the district to receive the credit. But obviously doing the training would be helpful. The board members simply need to enroll in the program. And those that choose to enroll will be provided again at length so they can complete their enrollment. So we'd encourage at least having two members do that. We need to have these tasks completed by November 4th, 2022 to receive the credit for the insurance year, which is the calendar year. And this last thing, I want to turn it over to Andrew Carlstrom. Andrew is going to present our safety minute tonight as well as the department report. Andrew?
Great, thank you, Paul. Well, good evening, President Sanders and Board of Commissioners. Our, let me take control first. Our safety moment tonight is going to be on service animals and the ADA. So the Americans with Disabilities Act, which is the ADA, provides that service animals are individually trained to do work or perform tasks for a person who has a disability. Only dogs are recognized as service animals under titles two and three of the ADA. And this presentation is not going to cover any additional provisions on the state and local level for emotional support, therapy, comfort, or companion animals. Service animals are working animals and they're not pets. The the work or task that a dog has been trained to provide must be directly related to a person's disability. And important for us to know is that the ADA does not require service animals to wear a vest, an ID tag, or a specific harness. Under the ADA, state and local governments, businesses, and nonprofit organizations that serve the public generally must allow service animals to accompany people who have disabilities in all areas of the facility where the public is normally allowed to go. A person with a disability cannot be asked to remove his or her service animal from the premises unless, number one, the dog is out of control and the handler does not take effective action to control it, or two, the dog is not housebroken. Under the ADA, service animals must be harnessed, leashed, or tethered unless these devices interfere with the service animal's work or the individual's disability prevents using these devices. And staff are not required to provide care or food for a service animal. And lastly, on this slide, it's when it's not obvious what service an animal provides, only limited inquiries are allowed. Staff can ask only two questions. Number one, is the dog a service animal required because of a disability? And two, what work or task has the dog been trained to perform? Staff cannot ask about the person's disability, require medical documentation, or require that a special identification card or training documentation for the dog, or ask that the dog demonstrate its ability to perform the task, the work or task. So that's it for the safety moment. For more information, go to the ada.gov. And that's your safety moment for tonight. And I'm going to transition to the department report now. The department report tonight is an update on the Customer Information System or CIS project. As I always do, this is just a reminder that what are we doing? We're replacing the legacy customized utility billing system with a commercial off the shelf customer information system. Our product is Open Smart Flex. This is a collaborative effort between TVWD and Clean Water Services in which both agencies are sharing cost decision making and ownership. TVWD will be the managing agency, not only for the implementation, but also on an ongoing basis. And the core CIS implementation is what we're engaged in right now. It's really foundational for future improvements for the district. So here's a snapshot of where we are today. If on the left side is a piece of our project schedule, you can see circled is go live. And we're rapidly approaching go live. We have three weeks to go. We're in cut over preparations. And on the right side is the status of the project using the stoplight methodology. All major project areas at this point have either been completed or they're in the green and on track. So in terms of being on track for July 5th go live, some of this you've seen already. At this point, we have no showstopper defects. We've tested over 1,500 test cases. Our final integration testing has been completed. Our key performance indicators for data conversion have been either met or exceeded. Very importantly, our parallel bill testing yielded 99.99% accuracy. And by the way, really appreciated Commissioner Doan's highlighting the importance of parallel testing a very early on in the project. Our financial balancing and reconciliation work is near completion. The staff user training is progressing to plan. We have completed mock go live and one and two. We're finalizing our production support preparations. And we're executing the customer communications plan. And the last item is one that was completed today. We had a go no-go decision, which was, do we proceed to the cut over phase based on a number of criteria? And the good news is the answer was yes, we do proceed. It was a go decision. So we're now entering the final, the final phase of pre-go live activity. And this, the next slide here is a, is a little snapshot of, of the cut over. And you can see various activities ranging from the final configuration log to mock go live, mock go live, mock go live one and two, our production support plan. You see the go no-go decision today. We're preparing the final cut over plan and checklist. It's actually done at this point. And we're entering the, the pre-cut over activities. And then toward, as you go to the right, we have the go live and then finishing on July 5th. A few notes I wanted to highlight here. The, the legacy billing system is going to shut down on Thursday, June 30th, at the end of the day. So for the period starting at five o'clock on June 30th, no paymentous payment transactions will be processed, starting five o'clock on the 30th and through the Fourth of July holiday weekend as we're managing the cut over activities. Auto pay transactions that are scheduled for this period are not going to be processed, but we'll be taking these, we'll be addressing these payments shortly after the cut over is complete. But that doesn't mean the auto pays are going to be disrupted, just those transactions. And then the, the new portal will be available to customers the morning of Tuesday, July 5th. And speaking of portal, this is just a reminder that we will have a new customer self-service portal. We showed you this before, we had a customer inquiry about, asking about, do they have to re-register for the new portal? Will the auto pay still work? Yes, they will transfer in the system cut over. We do have the issue of those transactions in the cut over window, but those will be addressed quite easily. The accessing the new portal services as well as making changes to paymentous does require customer registration. The good news is it's a very simple registration, registering, verifying, and connect. And there's a handy tool for looking up your account number if you don't know what it is. So this is a reminder that we do have a number of customer communications underway. We're in June, we have the coming soon email. We're reminding our monthly pay plan customers. We cut over and then the next four months, we have a number of activities. And we are going to be engaging quite a bit in social media messages throughout the summer. And then the fall, we'll have a talking water virtual portal demonstration. So I wanted to talk a little bit tonight about the stabilization. And that's the stabilization of the new CIS. And this is information, the text is from another utility CIS experience. So stabilization of the solution, the CIS, that's the period after go live where the business, TVWD and Clean Water Services are adjusting to their new processes, procedures, and policies of the new system. And at the same time, the, the new system may also be adjusted, correcting defects and changes that are, that are implemented that were not identified during the initial implementation phase. This is very normal. The end of the stabilization phase is often tied to the end of the implementation contract, consultant contract, and often the close of the project itself. So for us, the stabilization period is July through October. So we go live on July 5th. Obviously, a lot of activity over the next three weeks. We'll have this four month stabilization period in which we're adapting to the new processes. We have, we have ownership of the system finally. But it is a period where we are going to have productivity dip before we start climbing out of it. It's very normal. The actual stabilization, it could take longer than four months, but we should not expect that we will be entirely unique in this respect. And we're preparing staff for this, for this potential. So as a reminder, we are TVWD, we're the, we're the managing agency of this CIS partnership with Clean Water Services. We also will have the primary system admin and user support responsibilities. We'll have a governance model with Clean Water Services and open for operations, which is in some ways similar to our implementation governance. And very important, we'll have vendor performance contract management tasks, including making sure that our vendor adheres to service level agreements. And one thing I wanted to highlight tonight is also, since we're focusing right now on completing the core CIS implementation, there also is the next, the next phase, which we're calling Phase Two. And these are potential projects after, after our stabilization is complete. And so after we build this foundation, what else are we going to do with this system? Well, one thing we will probably do is looking at consolidating accounts. We have a number of customers that have numerous accounts, including some of our larger commercial customers. We're looking at advanced payment methods, and these are things like Google Pay and Apple Pay. Monthly billing has risen to near the top is something very interesting to both agencies. And we actually received an email recently from a customer who expressed interest in monthly billing. Any items that we've deferred from the core implementation? A bill redesign, which in all likelihood would be done in concert with monthly billing. Any items that would be identified by the rack that are pertinent? And then finally, advanced metering infrastructure, AMI. And one thing I wanted to highlight here is that all of these potential projects, they'll need to be prioritized and implemented in alignment with our governance with Clean Water Services. So that's what I have right now. We're on track to go live on July 5th. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them tonight.
I think you're all set. Well, no, I do see a hand, Andrew. Not sure whose hand it is.
It's, it's mine. I just have a brief question. So the new registration or account activation transfer would occur with the normal billing cycle? For example, I just paid my, my bill in the old system under paymentous. But our customers, as, as you switch over in a new system, when they get their new bill, they'll have instructions to register in the new system. Is that, that, that's how it's anticipated to be rolled out through each billing cycle?
We are taking on a bill cycle by bill cycle communication approach. If you have an auto pay though, that will continue undisrupted unless you make changes to your payment method.
Okay, I don't have an auto pay. That's, that's why I was asking about it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Duggan.
Well, Tim in chat has noted that you're down to 14 days, 23 hours, and 49 minutes. Though that probably has to be updated to 48 minutes. So Andrew, sleep well and have your team all sleep well or get as much sleep as possible. And good luck in 14 days, 23 hours, and 47 minutes.
Thank you. This has definitely been a team effort. And as Commissioner Doan noted a number of years ago, it's an amazing team.
Marvelous. Congratulations to all of you.
Thank you.
Any questions about the CIS project? Or let's see, going backwards a little bit, Paul had mentioned the SDAO Practices Program. I don't think, Paul, I don't think you know the answer. It's probably our risk management person. But who do we talk to about enrolling in the Board Leadership Academy? Something I would do over the summer if possible.
Actually, you are.
And actually do the training.
Yes, President Sanders, you are correct. It is Mike Jacobs. We're fortunate that Mike actually is on the board of SDIS. So he's a great liaison for us. And he's at the EWA Annual Conference and Exhibition this week. So when he gets back, he'd be the best point of contact.
Okay, I'll reach out to him next week then. Thank you, Paul.
You bet. And that concludes the CEO and management staff report. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, next agenda item is reports of meetings attended. And staying with our tradition, we will begin with the letter B. And I believe we have a commissioner that starts, last name starts with the letter B?
Yeah, not only B, but BA. Right in the front of the B.
Please.
I will lead off. Meetings I have attended on the 27th of May, I met with Commissioner Duggan and the CEO and the CFO. It was a finance committee meeting and we were talking about the progress on the rack, about debt issuance, and also about budgeting for our joint ventures. On the 7th of June, I had the board work session where we talked again about TVWD debt issuance and the Willamette Water Supply Project update and the CIS update. On the 10th, I had a special JWC meeting where we talked about FEMA grants and the ammonium sulfate contract. I probably said that wrong, but that's the way it stuck in my brain. And then of course, tonight's meeting, the regular board meeting for district business.
Very good. And it stuck in your head correctly, Commissioner Bagnell. All right, thank you, Commissioner Bagnell. Commissioner Doan?
Okay, I had three meetings. The work session, tonight's meeting, and the special meeting of the Joint Water Commission. So it's a light, light month for me.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Doan. Commissioner Duggan?
Well, I can't say it was a light month for me, but a month went by very quickly. On May 27th, I attended the Finance Committee meeting that Commissioner Bagnell already detailed, where we got the revenue bond updates. On the 1st of June, I attended the Regional Water Providers Consortium Board Meeting, which is our regular one third of a year meeting. And at that meeting, we held elections for the Chair of the Consortium. Brooks, Bridgette Brooks was reelected as the Chair. And Kevin Williams from Oak Lodge was elected Vice President. I was reelected as the Washington County Provider's recommendation representative to the consortium for another, another year. I think I've been doing it for, for quite a while. I don't think there's term limits on, on that, or I either get selected as the Washington County rep by default, or I get arm twisted into continuing to be on the executive committee. On the 2nd of June, I attended the Willamette Water Supply Board Meeting, where we had our regular monthly meeting. And we will get other updates about that. I think the commissioners are well aware of where things are at with Willamette Water Supply Project. On the 7th of June, I attended a webinar that was recommended by Commissioner Doan, put on by the University of North Carolina and Syracuse University for affordability rate design. And there's going to be a corresponding webinar in July. And I learned some, some very interesting facts and techniques on how to design rates to better provide equity for our ratepayers. On the 7th of, of June, I also attended our, our board work session where we got updates on the WWSS of finance and CIS. On the 14th, yesterday, I had a meeting with our CEO and President Saunders to do agenda planning. Also yesterday evening, I attended the Washington County CPO number one meeting where our Communications Director Andrea Watson presented an update on TVWD. She did an excellent job in talking about all our initiatives and in particular, talking about our rate situation and the anticipated problems that we're seeing with increased costs. And it was well received. And I appreciate her giving that very quick summary of everything that's going on in the district to our citizens at the community planning organization for Cedar Mill and Cedar Hills. Also at that meeting, Commissioner, Washington County Commissioner Pam Tries talked about her goals for the coming year and what she sees as the board of commissioners priorities for Washington County in the coming year. And then tonight's meeting. That's it for my June report.
Yeah, Commissioner Duggan, thank you. Light it is not, fast moving, perhaps. Always busy. For myself, on the 23rd, I met with our consultants CFM and Tom Hickman, getting an update on our legislative activities, both at the federal and state level. And then on the 31st, I met with Tom to talk about partnerships and begin lobbying planning. And then on the 6th, again, met with CFM and Tom to get another update on legislative planning or legislative update, and then some more planning on some of the state level lobbying efforts that we will be making shortly. On the 7th, the board work session that everybody has mentioned. Then again, we met on the 8th, probably for the obvious reason that on the 7th, we were handed the resignation by our good friend and Commissioner Dick Schmidt. Then on the 10th, the JWC special meeting that both Commissioners Bagnell and Commissioner Doan mentioned. And then on the 13th, again, I met with Tom to talk about our lobbying agenda and our board member changes. The 14th, the meeting that Commissioner Duncan, Duggan mentioned with regards to our board agenda planning meeting. And then on the 14th, met with our partners in Tiger, Toowalton, and Sherwood for our three time a year meeting on the Willamette River Water Coalition and had an outstanding presentation, one that I think was more than overdue by Joel Carey on the allocation or the reallocation plan from the Army Corps of Engineers. And maybe I'll backtrack some of that. I guess we couldn't, he couldn't have made that presentation until now because the Army Corps' final buy up and approval and sign off has been fairly recent. And now the state's response to it in terms of action is now just happening. So maybe it couldn't have happened any earlier. But I think having Joel in the role of leading the WRWC is excellent because that was a really relevant presentation. And then we finish with tonight's meeting, which we're all here enjoying right now. So that will be it for the reports of meetings attended. Do we have any topics to be raised by commissioners this evening? Okay, not hearing any, we will move into public comment where a public comment is set aside for persons wishing to address the board on items on the consent agenda and matters not on the agenda. Additional public comment will be invited, invited on agenda items as they are presented. Do we have any persons this evening who would like to comment? Do we have any persons this evening who would like to comment? Okay, not hearing any. We will move on to item number one this evening of our agenda, which is the consent agenda. The consent agenda items are considered to be routine and may be enacted in one motion without separate discussion. Any board members may request that an item be removed by motion for discussion and separate action. Any items requested to be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion will be considered immediately after the board has approved those items which do not require discussion. This evening, we are seeking to approve the May 18th, 2022 regular meeting minutes and approving the June 7th, 2022 work session minutes. Do we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented?
This is Commissioner Bagnell. I so moved.
This is Jim Down. I'll second.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Bagnell and Commissioner Don. I'd like to now ask our district recorder to provide the roll call vote.
Commissioner Bagnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Don?
Yes.
Commissioner Duggan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes. Thank you. The motion passes, so we will move on to agenda item number two, which is our business agenda. This evening, we're gathered to consider approving a motion to be read by title only. The Draft Ordinance of the Toowalton Valley Water District, Oregon, authorizing the issuance of water revenue bonds and to receive oral testimony or written comments and direct that the ordinance be brought back for a second reading and adoption at the June, July, apologies, at the July 20th, 2022 board meeting with a staff report by Paul Matthews.
Well, good evening again, President Sanders Commissioners. I feel as if you've heard all this before on a few occasions. But we did talk about this in the work session. The information I'm presenting here is going to be the same information we presented before. But because you are going to be asked to take some actions tonight, I think it's worthwhile putting in the public record and making sure the public has information as to what we discussed in the more informal work session. So that's why we're going to be repeating some of the same information here. Quick outline, I want to talk about the current situation that we have briefly. Highlight some of the key provisions of our proposed bond ordinance and then present a preliminary recommendation. You might remember that we've, the board approved, or yeah, the board approved the district's financial plan back in May. And as part of that financial plan, anticipated borrowing about $611 million, which is more than the current debt limit that was established by the district's ordinance 01-19. And so we're looking to increase that limit to facilitate the financing of the Willamette Water Supply Program, given some of the inflationary cost increases that we've experienced. The provisions that we have in the ordinance that we've presented in to you are the similar to the provisions of the existing ordinance, the 0119 ordinance. It does authorize an additional $100 million of borrowing for capital expenditures and includes an amount to cover issuance costs, reserve requirements and some other those types of fees. So the authorizations amount, the rest of the provisions are, are very similar, if not identical. The process pretty straightforward. We did present this to the Finance Committee on May 27th. And we did prevent, preview this information to you on the, on the seventh, see if you had any additional questions. So the recommended actions will be tonight, the first reading of the ordinance and then second reading and adoption at the July 20th meeting. And that concludes my report. Our recommendation is presented here on the slide. I can answer any questions that you might have this time.
Paul, I don't hear any questions from the board members. So with that then, I would like to follow up with your recommendation and ask if we can have a motion in a second to read by title only the draft ordinance.
This is Jim Down. I move that we read by title only and accept the draft ordinance.
This is Commissioner Bagnell. I will second.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner.
I see Clark is getting ready for his moment of prime time.
I'd like to first begin by asking our district recorder to provide a roll call vote.
Commissioner Bagnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Don?
An enthusiastic last, yes.
Commissioner Duggan?
A no less enthusiastic, yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes. Fantastic. Well, then enthusiastically, the motion passes. I'd like to invite staff to read the ordinance title into the record.
I will do that. The ordinance of Toowalton Valley Water District, Oregon, authorizing the issuance of water revenue bonds. First reading.
Thank you. If there's anyone who wishes to comment, each person is limited to five minutes unless an extension is granted. Do we have anyone who would like to comment? Not hearing any then. I would like to ask of the board if we could get a motion to direct staff to bring back the ordinance for a second reading and adoption at the July 20th, 2022 board meeting.
This is Commissioner Duggan. So moved.
Thank you.
This is Jim Down. Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Duggan. Thank you, Commissioner Don. Can I please have our district recorder provide the roll call vote?
Commissioner Bagnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Don?
Yes.
Commissioner Duggan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes. And the motion passes just as enthusiastically. Fantastic. Thank you, everyone. Item B this evening is to consider adopting Resolution 09-22, which is a resolution approving the First Amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement between the Toowalton Valley Water District and the City of Beaverton for emergency water use. And this, this staff report will be provided by Clark Balfour and it looks like Pete Boone as well.
I think I will lead on this and Paul is going to advance my slides if I understand correctly. And there's Pete. Hello, Pete. So we've talked about this before. This is the First Amendment to an existing agreement that we have that's about two years old. And this is part of our working with Beaverton as part of their separation actions, activities. I don't know why I lost it there. Anyway, Beaverton is separating out what they call Area Four, which is primarily the waterhouse area. We had this agreement back in 2020 where we would agree to provide some emergency fire flow in their areas pending certain improvements in Walker Road and those improvements are dependent upon when the county does their road project, which has gone through various delays. So that Phase One and Two of Area Four was part of the original agreement. This extends it to Phase Four of Area Four and essentially updates the exhibit on our methodology for charging and specifies that we have new areas involved. So really, it doesn't change the agreement you approved two years ago. It only extends the reach of its area pending completion of their other improvements, which will then, you know, take away the need for TVWD to provide some additional service. And so unless Pete has anything, it's just here for your approval. You know, now, okay, now I have these slides and then I just run through it. I'm sorry. So this, this is, and because there's a picture, I have to explain it. So if, if you look at that intersection, that's the intersection of 173rd and Walker. And the main part of the area, Area Four there on, on each side of the road is that section of Walker Road from 173rd to 185th. And if you've been on it recently, you know that it's a, it's a two lane section of, of Walker Road. It's, it's your traditional old county road and the linkages on each side, which are urban level streets, you know, two lanes, refuge lanes, bike paths, the whole thing. You know, that is not in this area and this is the big road project that the county is trying to, to accomplish over the next few years. So, so until that gets done and, and water lines get put in and, and our own water line needs to be relocated as well. We're gonna, we've agreed, our staff believes that this is a good idea to help Beaverton through this time. And really, as we said, it is for emergency water use only. So that probably will not tax us too much. Let's see if there's another slide. Oh, there is. Okay, now here's the punchline. Please consider adopting the resolution that approves this agreement. And Pete and I have questions or will answer questions if you have them. I think I got my eight seconds.
I think you have your eight seconds. Aloha, Clark.
Thank you. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to be optimistic about the weather changing, so I decided to wear this shirt tonight.
It's appreciated. All right. Well, I'll ask the board then, can we have a motion in a second to adopt Resolution 09-22? A resolution approving the First Amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement between the Toowalton Valley Water District and the City of Beaverton for emergency water use.
This is Jim Down. So moved.
And this is Commissioner Bagnell. I will second.
Thank you, Commissioner Don. Thank you, Commissioner Bagnell. I'd like to please ask our district recorder to provide the roll call vote.
Commissioner Bagnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Don?
Yes.
Commissioner Duggan?
I need to declare a potential conflict of interest or a perceived conflict of interest for the next 15 days. And for the last 37 years, I've been employed by the City of Beaverton. And therefore, again, as to avoid any perceived conflict of interest, I must abstain. But come next month, if we have anything involving the City of Beaverton directly, I will gladly weigh in, but I abstain respectfully.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Commissioner Duggan. The motion passes. There being no further business before the Board of Commissioners. This meeting will be adjourned and is adjourned. So we will end our.